Good evening and welcome to the November 12th meeting of the governing body. I call this meeting to order. If you'll stand if able for the invocation from Councilwoman Hiller and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you all. Going to present some thoughts today just from me. Overall, thank you everyone for all that you do for the city and for each other. It really matters. That said, my thoughts leaned into the fact that it's been a tumultuous time here nationally, down to locally, and out as far as globally. A pastor that I reached out to for today was so overwhelmed with issues already on his heart and schedule that he regretfully declined for the invocation for this evening. That tells a lot. So, let me touch base on some recent experience of mine with Topeka United and the immortal words of characters from Charles Dickens's The Christmas Carol. Let us together review our proud heritage here in Topeka as a crossroads to freedom, but remind ourselves and others that we all know we are not where we want to be yet. To take a step, let's encourage everyone to gather friends or family, or go solo, and explore at least one unfamiliar holiday experience this season, and then share those thoughts about how that went with at least someone. Consider the commitment made by Scrooge after the ghosts had shared with him insights on his own experiences and those of others. He was inspired to say, "I will honor Christmas in my heart and try to keep it all year. I will live in the past, the present, and the future. The spirits of all three shall strive within me. I will not shut out the lessons that they teach." If someone says something harsh or hateful, maybe inside your head instead of out loud, feel free to let it go with famous words from Scrooge, also from Scrooge, bah, humbug. And last, in the immortal words of Tiny Tim, for the entire season, God bless us, everyone. Thank you.
(inaudible)
Mayor Padilla. Deputy Mayor Kell.
Here.
Councilmembers Hiller.
Here.
Valdivia Aquila.
Here.
Ortiz.
Here.
Banks.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Dobler.
Here.
Duncan.
Here.
All right, we have nine present. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Hofer. I apologize. Thank you. I apologize. We have nine present, guys. Thank you.
Agenda item number two, consent agenda, Madam Clerk.
A is an approval of a Public Works Department contract amendment for professional engineering and design services between the City of Topeka and SBB Engineering LLC for an updated contract amount not to exceed $74,435. B is a resolution introduced by the Public Infrastructure Committee comprised of councilmembers Sylvia Ortiz, David Banks, and Neil Dobler recommending approval of project number 841099 Phase 2 for street improvements of southeast 30th Street, southeast Powell Street, and southeast Turnpike Avenue, as further described in Exhibit A. C is a resolution introduced by the Public Infrastructure Committee comprised of councilmembers Sylvia Ortiz, David Banks, and Neil Dobler recommending approval of project numbers 841098 Phase 8 and 501125 Phase 1 for street and sewer improvements at southwest Moundview Drive from southwest 19th Street to southwest 21st Street as further described in Exhibit A. D is a resolution introduced by the Public Infrastructure Committee comprised of councilmembers Sylvia Ortiz, David Banks, and Neil Dobler recommending approval of project numbers 841099 Phase 3 and 501107 Phase 7 for street and storm sewer improvements for southwest Gerald Lane, southwest Bit Road, and southwest 11th Street as further described in Exhibit A. E are the minutes of the regular meeting of November 5th, 2025, and we have no applications.
You've heard the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve? Move by Councilwoman Hofer and seconded by Councilwoman Ortiz. Vote, please.
Wasn't logged in when we started, so it's not letting me vote, but yes.
Okay. Okay, we have, the motion carries. We have nine yes.
All right, agenda item three, action items. Madam Clerk.
A is a public hearing to consider the establishment of the Sunflower Crossing Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment District in the area of the northwest quadrant of Topeka Boulevard and Kansas Avenue, Topeka, Kansas. A is an ordinance introduced by the City Manager, Dr. Robert M. Perez, establishing a redevelopment district within the City of Topeka, Kansas, and making certain findings in conjunction therewith Sunflower Crossing Redevelopment District.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you. Mayor, members of the governing body, Braxton Copley, Deputy City Manager, who will lead us through this item.
Thank you, City Manager. So what we're talking about here is the establishment of a redevelopment district under the tax increment finance statutes. Now, the basis for the establishment of this district is going to be because it is a blighted area. There is a statute, KSA 121770, that lists the factors that need to be identified and found present on the property to meet that requirement for blight. In this particular case, if you've driven by there, you know that this is a slam dunk in terms of meeting this standard. Seven of the nine statutory factors are present in this, and that would include the deteriorated structures, inadequate street layout, unsanitary or unsafe conditions, deterioration of site improvements, obsolete plating, conditions that endanger life or property, and conditions that create economic obsolescence. The developer did engage a consultant who did a thorough blight study, and that is attached to and part of the agenda item. I will gladly stand for any questions that you have. Once we convene the public hearing, the developer is present, as well as his counsel, who will be here to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Is there any question from the body, or do you want to go to the public hearing? All right. At this time, I'll open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone present who would like to speak to the matter. At this time, I will open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone present who would like to speak to the matter. Please state your name.
Councilman, my name is Ben Bigum, attorney for the applicant, BHI Development. I'm just expressing gratitude to staff for all the work they've done throughout this process and assisting us with getting here today. So, we're standing for questions. If anything comes up that the council wants to address, just call my back up here. I'll make sure to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And for a third time, at this time, I will open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone present who would like to speak to the matter. No one else? The public hearing is closed. Anyone from the governing body who'd like to address the issue? Councilman Miller.
Thank you. Now that you said that, I would love to hear what your vision is for that area. Let the city and let the public know what your thoughts are.
Yeah, absolutely.
If you gentlemen want to take a seat at the table, it's fine.
Okay, yeah, yeah. Sorry, due to this.
That way you're not shouting cheer or mic. You guys can vote.
Can you hear me?
Guys, hear me? Yep.
Okay, so, we've been working on this project for two and a half years. And first of all, I'd like to also thank the council because of all the hearings that we've had that I've watched, reviewed, everybody saw this in a positive light, and that is so much appreciated from a guy like me. Go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Jerry Rousch. I am a Topekan, a long time Topekan. My wife and I live here. My wife works for the Kansas Livestock Association. We settled here about 35 years ago. Now, raised our kids here, and so we are very lifelong Topekins. This is where the wagon broke down, if you will. And so, we, I worked in Kansas City for a long time. I retired. And then I met Russ Briggs, and he said, "Hey, can you help me with this development?" And that was about three years ago. And so, Russ and I got together, and we said, "Hey, what can we do here? Can you help me with the development of this particular project?" And I told them we would. And so, what we did was we laid out a vision of what this project should look like. Project should look at housing. We have a need for housing. And so, we have land set aside in the back that we're not asking for incentives on that. But we have housing that we have set out. Then we said, "We need a major chain. We need someone that will come to town and that we don't already have, that will drive traffic off of 470 and bring new revenue, new customers, and they will see something when they get off of Topeka Boulevard that is favorable." We got that accomplished already. So, we've accomplished two of our goals already on what that project is. Today, we see restaurant, retail use. We see, for lack of a better term, we feel Village is a great model for our city. Imagine, if we can all imagine together, what that would look like right off of South Topeka Boulevard with all of the changes, with all of the changes that KTA has made. And now, when you come off, it's metropolitan, guys. I've worked in Kansas City for 30 years. This is as metropolitan as we can get. You don't have to stop. You don't have to pay. You don't have to cross traffic. There are no safety issues when you come off of that. So now, when you come off of that, you get the opportunity to go right now instead of just traveling on to Wanamaker. So now, we're going to bring more revenue, more new customers, and so our vision is to brighten it up. We've got a public street going in. We've got streetlights going in. We've got landscaping on our plan. I mean, you guys have probably all seen it, but we have all of that that you would need. We've got a stoplight that's going to come in to make it safe when people come in and turn in and out of our subdivision. So, we have ingress, egress. Let me tell you, I cannot commend the city utilities any more than I can tonight on how willing that they've been to work with us on relocating lines, relocating gas lines, moving fiber, all of that stuff that we've been working on for the last couple of years. We're ready to break ground. We're ready to have our groundbreaking. We get through this little political thing that we're going through right now, and we get through that, then that's when you're going to see stuff, at least we're going to start moving dirt. And that's going to be exciting. And then, when people are coming down the turnpike, it's going to give them a reason to pull off. And you know what they're not going to see? The tents that are up there right now, the old broken down bar, the trees, the hills of dirt, the blighted hotels across the, I mean, they're not going to see that. You know what they're going to focus on? They're going to focus on the lighted, the stoplight, the new business, and it's going to make us proud to be Topekins. And for you guys, it's going to make you proud to be part of the city council that helped make that happen. That's my spiel, and sorry to be so passionate, okay? Yeah, so, yeah. Yeah, so, but I am. I mean, I feel, I feel really good of what we put together on this project, and no roadblocks. I mean, I can't sit here and give you one piece of bad news tonight of any roadblocks that we think we're going to hit. We've had great conversations. And imagine this, guys. Imagine when we break ground. We're on the tip of the iceberg of what could happen. Imagine when we break ground and we actually have something going on there. This is not, you know, on down the road, you know, we're lucky, we got Chick-fil-A, we got Whataburger, we had another new development going, and we have all of that. We're the gateway. Sunflower Crossing is the gateway of what's going to make this really happen, and it's only going to drive more business to South Topeka Boulevard, which is what we need. Wouldn't it be great if we could bring White Lakes Mall back? When Cindy and I moved here, White Lakes Mall was booming. Heck, the other mall wasn't even done yet, and White Lakes was still booming. And so, imagine what that can do if we can be the catalyst, and it's only going to drive more developers and more commerce to the city. That's my spiel, so, sorry it takes long, guys. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilman Banks.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. You know, from where we sit, we can see the excitement, and I certainly would like to thank Councilman Miller for asking about your vision because I think that our community needs to hear what you just gave us because in many cases, when we have developers, they're not, they don't seem to be as excited about the project as you have shown us here tonight. I don't have a question, but I'm excited because that borders District 3 and 4, which makes it a livelier view for the other two districts, you know, having added District 5. So, I'd just like to thank you for being willing to work in Topeka because some people, so many developers are not saying all the good things that you just said about our city. So, I appreciate that. Thank you, Councilman Miller, for asking for that vision because it enlightens all of us. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Now, what is the chain that you were talking about going in there?
It was, currently, the QuickTrip was announced there. That's what he was speaking to.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I didn't. Yeah, I didn't go to a lot of specifics.
Worst kept secret around, but you know, this is my district, and I've seen where the houses that were there got torn down because they couldn't, you know, keep people from getting in them all the time and setting fires in there. There hasn't been upkeep. The bar, and I think if they tried to open that bar right now, they'd have to go in there and replace every piece of copper that's been, was in that building. So, this to me is a great thing. And then, QuickTrip. And I'm a person that's, I'm a creature of habit. You give me near a QuickTrip, that's where I'm stopping. And Kansas City, Wichita, wherever it's at, that's where I go, and I think that'd be a great addition to our market. And like you said, and I've said in the past, getting people off on their way down to Wichita as a place to stop in Topeka, and like you said, it's not just the QuickTrip. There's that Whataburger, there's the Chick Place. It's enough to get people to stop and start sending some money here in Topeka, which I greatly appreciate, and especially, and like I said, in the heart of my district. Anyone else? Okay, is there a motion from the body? Moved by Councilman Miller, seconded by Councilman Banks. Roll call, please. Or vote, sorry.
And Councilmember Ortiz, what was your vote? Yes, okay.
Did I get a point of order?
Yes, Mr. Councilman Duncan.
Yeah, this was a public hearing, correct? Did we officially close the public hearing?
Yes.
Yes, he did. Okay, sorry. It's cut out a few times, so thank you.
And Councilmember Dobler, what is your vote?
Yes.
And Duncan?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes. We have nine yes.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Can I say one more thing?
Yes, sir.
Thanks, guys. I really appreciate it. I mean, this is, it's going to be good. It's going to be a good thing for the city, and it's going to be a good thing for everybody involved in all of this, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, agenda item number four, non-action items. Madam Clerk.
A is an update on the city's demolition and condemnation process and proposed ordinance amendments to enhance prosecution for non-owner occupied properties and creating a rental registration program.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the governing body. In this discussion item, which we bring to you under the FY 2025 strategic goal of strengthening our co-compliance processes, as requested by city council, we will review our demolition and condemnation processes. Additionally, as part of this goal, we have also been researching the possibilities for enhanced prosecution for non-owner occupied properties and rental registration. I will caveat that these two items have not been vetted through any committees, but we wanted to seek input and guidance from council to determine if there would be support to proceed, and if so, which committee should be hearing these items. With that, I will turn it over to John Sardine, our Property Maintenance Division Director, Matt Mullin, our senior attorney, and Kelly Trussell, our chief prosecutor.
Evening, council. Thank you for inviting me tonight and taking this opportunity to explain deeper in detail. I provided council with a cheat sheet about two months ago for condemnations and demolitions. I did that because I was feeling a handful of questions from council on a regular basis. So I figured to nip it in the bud and provide you with something to give your constituents some answers. I'd like to extend that tonight for a small presentation, if you don't mind. Do you have a button? Okay, just to make sure you got it. The goals tonight will be to clarify the difference between condemnations and demolitions, explain the legal and practical impacts for property owners and the city, and demonstrate how condemnations and demolitions connect to the broader community goals. I'm going to start with condemnations, if you don't mind. A condemnation is a legal status, declares a property unsafe or uninhabitable, specifically related to structural integrity, sanitation, or infestations. It's always initiated after an inspection and involves due process. You'll find that most everything that property maintenance does involves due process. It does not always mean demolition. The goal is protect public health and safety. Now, when a property is under investigation for condemnation, the owner may make repairs to bring the property into compliance. There are appeals available for the decision, or they can simply sell the property. The city must keep it condemned and secure it as long as it's in violation. And we will pursue demolition if no compliance is met. Now, mind you, we want property owners to bring their properties into compliance. We don't want to bring the properties down, but we are prepared to take legal action if we don't get compliance. The latest report I ran was on the 7th and showed 198 properties condemned. That list fluctuates. It's very fluid. One week, I'll have 150. The next week, I'll have 250. So it all, it really, there's a relationship between the occupants and the owner. The owners of some of the rentals that we have, most of the rentals, the landlords can't keep track of what their folks do, right? They're responsible for their properties, but you don't know what you're really putting in that house. So it's hard for me to come down on the property owner for some of the issues that I continuously see, like sanitation of growth weeds. Some of the folks that are occupying these properties don't know how to take care of the properties. We have to consider that when we come down on the property owners. So that's why I have my staff investigate, find out what the root cause is, and this has a lot to do with the condemnations moving toward demolitions. So, getting back to that list, 200, 198, 150 of those were unfit for human occupancy. That could be for lack of utilities, that could be infestation, that could be a sanitation issue. Unsafe structures deal strictly with the structural integrity, maybe a natural disaster, a fire or flood. We have one multi-housing foreclosure in the City of Topeka. I think we all know who that is. And then we have 16 unsheltered camps, which we had to condemn. Moving on to demolition. A demolition is an action. It's permanent. The physical removal of structure or structures either by the property owner or by the city through enforcement or abatement. It's used when a building is structurally unsound, possesses imminent danger, or has been condemned or left unrepaired. Not all condemned buildings are demolished, but all demolitions start with a condemned building. Does that make sense? Okay, comparing the two side by side, should be a demolition process. There you go. Sequence of inspections, I'm sorry, for demolition. The PMU follows federal, state, and local laws to ensure that due process is followed. A notice is served to the property owner of their ongoing investigation. Staff is transparent and asks for complete cooperation from the property owner. The owner has a right to appeal, provided they can show that they have physical and financial resources to make repairs, and that's what we're looking for. So during the appeal processes, really when this comes together, we find out what's going on, why are we here, how did the property get in this state? And we determine structural repairs must exceed 30% of the assessed value. That's what gets it qualified for possible demolition. It must meet at least 30%. During the administrative hearing, the property owner gets one hearing, but that hearing can expand to a dozen hearings, as long as they're showing ongoing progress, and that's what we're looking for. And regular contact with the inspector. If for some reason, reason the family or the property owner doesn't want to keep the property and it's falling down, it's going to cost more to keep up and repair, there is a voluntary demolition program through Housing Services. That's always recommended. It's always cheaper for some reason, but it's always recommended. And demolition is the last resort. Remember, there's no coming back from demolition. Once we demolish it, it's done. So, looking at key differences side by side, condemnation is a legal status, unsafe or uninhabitable. Demolition is a physical action. The owner can repair a condemnation. There's no coming back from demolition. Condemnations are reversible with compliance and can lead to a demolition if repairs aren't made. Demolitions are permanent, and it's the last resort, the very last resort. Next. Connecting to broader community goals, strategic priorities in public safety, neighborhood revitalization, and equity. Condemnation removes immediate dangers, protects the tenants, neighbors, and first responders. A demolition supports long-term revitalization, reduces blight, opening parcels for redevelopment. Each demolition represents a calculated investment by the city. By prioritizing properties that are beyond repair, the city avoids pouring taxpayer dollars, temporary and fixes, and repeat abatements that provide little or long-term value. Selective demolition. I know that we get a handful of questions about when is this property coming down, when is that property coming down? There is a process that we go through. We have to be very selective in how we spend our funds. We have a limited amount of funds, and I think we discussed that in previous council meetings. So we're going after the most dangerous properties that we have. We have to focus on them first, and then, when we have enough money, we can go after the structures that have been there forever, that have been tied, not so much tied up in court, but the ones that they don't have a family. A house lights up the neighborhood when they have somebody taking care of it. I call it family. So when you don't have a family, you're just going to sit there and be exposed forever until you fall down. That's typically what happens to these properties. So we're going to start focusing on them once we take care of the priorities. Selective demolition isn't about tearing down homes. It's about protecting community investments. Every dollar we spend demolishing an unsafe structure saves money, more in future enforcement, police, and fire costs while ensuring that reasonable owners are treated fairly, neighborhoods remain safe, stable, and ready for redevelopment. The numbers I have up here from 2023 and 2024, I feel uncomfortable giving you 2025 at this time because we're not sure on how many we're going to have done. I estimate eight, 10 if you include the voluntary demolitions. I'm not sure, I can't predict on the emergency demolitions because they come up pretty quick, and we have to take care of it pretty quick. I know this year, we've had two already, and the emergency demolitions are probably 50% more than regular demolition. In 2023, we had a total of 180 investigations with 16 demolitions. 2024, 121 with 15 demolitions. And you can see the amount of average days each demolition takes and the amount of money that we spend on each property when we have to demolish it. With that, I will open up to any questions.
Councilman Valdivia Aquila.
You, Deputy Mayor, I do have a couple
You, Deputy Mayor, I do have a couple of questions. John, can we go back to that last slide because I didn't understand the number?
The demolition one?
Yeah, the very last one. It's the average cost per case.
Right.
It's 23,994, and then so it went up a bit. And that was in 2023, and then 2024, it went to 3694. Is, is that just, could that have had to do with the size of the house?
Well, the size, if it has asbestos, that requires extra treatment. I can tell you, in 2024, we demolished 625 Polk, and that required about $200,000. So that was a big chunk of money, and that's why I was throwing that number up.
Okay, do you ever find that, and I'm thinking about several years ago in North Topeka, I forget what street it was on, but there was a series of, I think, four houses in the two-block area that were, that ended up, because they had so much squatting and fires, all of them ended up being demolished, which made a huge difference in the area, one with a real sense of more health and safety, right, for the, for the neighborhood. Are you finding that your demolitions are far apart? Are you finding that you're having houses that are closer together? And then I have one more question for you.
It really, it depends on the circumstances on why we're bringing that property down. Not only does it got to qualify size-wise and cost-wise, but you're also looking at families in that neighborhood that don't respond, right? So if you've got four properties that have been vacant forever, and we finally just, the community grew tired of it, remember, the squeaky wheel gets the oil, right? So I'm not going to sit here and give you false information saying, hey, we're on top of everything, when really, when it comes to demolition, we're responding. We're responding to these properties that catch fire, to the ones that are neglected and basically falling down. These aren't the easiest things to find. I know, everybody knows where one is, and this is why we respect what you're telling us, we're listening to you, and we take that opportunity when you do report it, and we go out and inspect it. So I don't see any real relevant relationship between the location of the properties, it's just a matter of how quick can we get to them, and why do they got to come down?
Okay, so thank you for that. And then one more, if an individual councilperson wanted to know not only the number of, you know, properties that have, that have been condemned or, and/or that were up for possible demolition, and the location, right, not just the number, but the location, can you, can we request that from you?
Sure.
Okay, all right, that's all we needed. Thank you, thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Councilman Banks?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. John, let's say that we condemn a property for utilities, and when we condemn that property, the person that's living there should be, should not be there, right?
Well, it all depends. I mean, we, when we discover there's a property suffering from some type of violation, I say suffering because it's usually brought on by the occupant. So it's suffering from some type of lack of utilities. My staff will go out and investigate. Why is there no utilities? Did you forget to pay your bill? And then we're going to offer resources. The last thing we want to do is displace people, right? So if they belong there, they have a contract, or they own the house, we're going to do everything on our side to get them the resources they need to survive. If they don't belong there, if this is a case of squatting, then we're going to do everything to condemn that property, secure it, and believe it or not, we actually find these folks a place to go that's legal.
My, my thoughts are that I know an occupant that continued to live in a condemned building, and the owner continued to collect rent even though we had condemned it. That person should not have been living there. They were asked to move, and they did not move, but both that person and the owner knew that the place was condemned. It was unlivable.
Right.
So the owner continued to collect rent from that person until we eventually demolished the building.
I'm not going to say it doesn't happen, it doesn't, I can't picture the property you're talking about, however...
21st and Adams.
No, we didn't demolish that building.
Who demolished it?
That was the property owner that demolished that building.
Okay.
Yeah. Now, we actually made contact with the occupant's family, and the last, the last few contacts I had with his family was that they were going to find him housing, this person housing. I didn't have a conversation with his son. It was a female, I believe, if I remember correctly.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Councilman Miller?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Thanks for the information. Appreciate you, John, you already know that. I wrote down, when you're talking about the selective demolitions, you know, can you compare that to like basically our PCS system, where we rate the streets of what we can get to depending on the funds that we have at that time in that year?
So when it comes to demolitions, we have to prioritize, we look at the house itself, we look at the community. What does it mean to the community? So giving you figures according to, what was it called, the PC?
PCI.
I don't know if I can do that, but I can tell you what we look at when we demolish.
Right, no, I'm not saying as elaborate as that. That's not what I'm saying. But I mean, like, is it kind of like that, to where we only have, say, $500,000 a year we can use for it? I don't know what the budget is.
It's less next year, so.
I imagine so. But whatever the budget is, so just that everybody understands, so it's like, if I, if I live near a home that I believe should be demolished, or I am sending emails, I'm writing messages, I'm the squeaky wheel you're talking about, and this is not as dangerous as some other properties that we need to get to, how do we let those people know that we see, we hear what you're saying, but here's why we have to address this other place first?
So we, we talk to the complainants, and if we can't meet their need, we'll tell them why. It's simply not going to qualify at this time, it's not going to be emergency, we have other priorities ahead of that. We're not going to forget it. We're going to try to find somebody, like, we have a link that we push properties to the Shawnee County Appraiser Site to put on the next auction. We're always pushing properties to the auction, and we're always giving information to the land bank. So hopefully, between those two and other developers that we know, somebody was going to be interested in this property. Eventually, it will probably have to come down if I can't find somebody interested.
So, and the other reason I ask is, and I don't want to add more work for you, it's just keeping them informed. Do they have to reach back out to find out when that area is going to be taken care of?
Uh, yeah, and we also have a public-side facing portal, where they can put in an address and get an update on the cases.
Yep.
So.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Councilman Ortiz?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Hey, you know, John, I think I've said this before, you know, when people hear condemned, they think you're going to tear it down. They don't understand that you can be in there and working on it. And so I'm working with a lady, and all of her neighbors have complained because they're like, well, that house is condemned, she shouldn't be in there. And so I wish there was some type of, another word we could use, you know, some type of verbiage, because, again, they keep calling when she's in there because they think she shouldn't be in there. And so I've had to kind of explain to them that she, she can be in there, working on her property as it's tied up in court.
She can, absolutely.
But they think, because we have condemned it, it's, it needs to be tore down, and she needs to be out. So I, I think that's something, again, if we can kind of look at that.
Sure. And shoot me the address too, so I can do some research on it.
Oh, you have the address, but I'll shoot it to you again.
Okay.
Another thing is, I just want to say on the 21st and Adams, if you don't know a situation and you haven't been in that house, we don't just take it upon ourselves until a developer comes through and pulls the water meter, and then that's how it got condemned, and that's how the city got involved in that, because that developer and that landlord knew, but nobody else knew that had not been in the house.
Correct.
So, you know, once, once we got involved, then, then we started, but it was that, there was that developer that got with the landlord and did that to, to the gentleman, which was terrible, terrible. I won't say his name, but I think everybody knows who that is, and it's, it's just, it's just terrible what he did just to make money. Anyway, I wanted to also say to you, when we condemn a house and we tear it down, does that, are those properties, does that, does that action, that cost, go back to that person?
Goes back to the property owner at the time of demolition.
He has to pay that, right?
Yes.
Is that true in every single case that he has to pay, that every single case they have to pay that?
I'm not going to say every single case, because I can't, I haven't pulled the reports and pulled each case and look at them, so I can tell you that they're invoiced, and I tell you, I can tell you that we have a very poor record for collecting that money when it comes to demolitions. There's a reason why the house was vacant, there's a reason why it was abandoned, there's a reason why it burnt down, it's usually vacated. So when it comes to cases like that, usually the properties, the owners walked away, or they're deceased, or the family has no interest in them. So it ends up in our lap.
Well, and I see, I think I've been seeing more people that their houses have caught on fire, and they can't afford, they don't have insurance, and they can't afford to get it tore down. But then I also hear from taxpayers that says, well, I have to pay my taxes, and so I don't think that's fair, that my taxpayer money is paying for that, and that's, that's why I asked the question. Okay?
Yeah.
I want to thank you and Code for all that you guys do, because it's, it is, it is tough out there. I have one more question for you. I'll, I'll think of it. Thank you.
You got my number?
I do, I do have your number.
Anything for anyone online or anyone else in person? Mr. City Manager, anything else on this?
Not on this one, Deputy Mayor, but I believe there's still another presentation.
Yeah, we have.
Thank you.
I'm done. You guys will?
I'm waiting for you.
Oh.
Yes.
Good evening. I'm Chief Prosecution, Kelly Trussell. I'm here tonight to discuss what we're putting out to members of the governing body to consider, which is a non-owner occupied property ordinance amendment. It would amend TMC 8.60.070. Right now, that ordinance is, it allows prosecutors to use their discretion to dismiss when everything is abated, so no fines. Really, what this amendment would be proposing is to provide stronger punishment for non-owner occupied dwellings on those owners, and the purpose of that would be to go ahead and fine them even if they do come into compliance. I could still dismiss for other reasons, like new ownership, et cetera, but just because they fixed it after it's made it all the way to prosecution, I would no longer have the discretion to, to dismiss the case without fines. So the, the goal of this amendment is really about to get to compliance faster. It's not really about fining the owner. Really, you know, before it ever reaches my office for prosecution, it's already gone through a process through the Property Maintenance Unit. That owner has had the opportunity to be on notice of these violations, they know about them, they continue to rent out those properties and collect those rents, but then they do not comply with the violations. This proposed change would motivate, so to speak, these types of owners to actually comply faster, before it reaches prosecution, so they aren't facing those fines, and also to, once they do reach prosecution, and especially if it was an emergency situation where it got filed quickly after the case was opened by the Code, it would also motivate them to, to come into compliance even on the prosecution side faster, because then prosecution can use their discretion on what those fines look like. If they quickly acted, or did they drag their feet for a year? Those are two entirely different scenarios that can be taken on a case-by-case basis. So we also would stress that this is only the non-owner occupied dwellings, so if it is not occupied by a tenant, it wouldn't fall into this situation. If it's, if it's occupied by the owner themselves, it would not fall into this situation, I could still dismiss for compliance. But this is specifically to those who are renting or allowing people to live with permission in homes that are not in compliance with the Code and are in violation, and we want to get those fixed, and we want to find a way to address this, and then it would be in a tiered system, which is already in place in the Code that stacks every, we look back three years, so repeat offenders, it's, the, the fines escalate. Now, that part is already in the ordinance, and we would not want that to be changed, but we would definitely look at each of those individual owners and follow that, those guidelines as already put into the ordinance.
Thank you, governing body, Matt Mullen, Senior Attorney. We're going to look at rental dwelling license, and as City Manager said, we're looking for direction on how Council wants to proceed on this, so we're going to go through. So we've been looking at other cities and how they're doing this, so we've been taking those in, and then from that, we'll take your direction tonight and put that into place. An example of definition for a rental license would be a license issued by the city permitting a rental dwelling to be rented and/or occupied by persons other than the owner and owner's immediate family, subject to the terms set forth in the potential chapter that we'd have. So we've been looking at, the best fit would be in Title V, which is our business licenses and regulations. It shows up here 5.130. That's currently repealed, that would be just a place that we could put it in if we wanted to go that route. The applicability of it, so an example of that, rental license shall be issued for each rental dwelling building under common ownership and shall be deemed to cover all units therein under common ownership. So if the rental dwelling is a building that has different ownership for different units therein, then each owner shall be required to have that separate license. There would be certain exceptions, looking at here, would not apply to like hotels, motels, convents, nursing homes, dormitories, or other similar buildings like that. So with the number of potential rental dwellings in the city, it's going to take a decent amount of time to get into compliance, so this shows possibly 2027 or even beyond that, by the time we determine how many rental dwellings we're looking at and how we get those owners into compliance with that. Some of the standards we've seen in other cities are, you know, paying the required fees and then doing the inspections, keeping their information current with the city, making sure that that dwelling unit's not dangerous or unfit, and remaining in compliance with all codes and regulations. So fees, we don't have a set fee in mind, we'd like to get feedback for that, but like other fees that we have in the city, we would put that possibly in our fee ordinance so that we could update that when we do that ordinance every year, rather than opening up the rental license ordinance each year, so we could do that by fee ordinance. Some of the duties that we're looking at, so the duty of the licensee or the owner would be to obtain and maintain that rental license, remain in compliant with the section of the city code. For the city, if someone becomes non-compliant, we'd have the ability to revoke or suspend that rental license, and then also for prosecution, under Section 1.10070, which is the general penalties of the city, we'd have that ability to find them possibly guilty of a misdemeanor and have that, that fine and cost and possible jail time, and then under that section also, each day that it's in violation could also be another violation. So the next steps we're looking at for both of these, from me and Kelly, we're going to, we want to solicit feedback from council members and direct that to staff, so we can go forward with one or both of these, or we can go forward with, with neither of these. go forward with one or both of these, or we can go forward with, with neither of these. So we're just looking for that feedback from you guys tonight. So any questions or comments, we'll stand for.
And Matt, just really quick, if we can clarify, when we talk about inspections, we cannot require internal inspections based upon state law, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So I just want to make sure, saw inspection up there, Deputy Mayor, governing body did receive some concerns that we may try to require internal inspections, but I just want for the record to state that we do not, we're not permitted to do so. So I just want to put that out there for the record. Thank you.
We want to go public comment first before the council body? Okay. We'll start with public comment, we have five people signed up for it. I apologize if I mispronounce anyone's name. First up, we have Steve Vogel. Is Steve Vogel here? Mr. Vogel, you understand the rules?
Okay.
You have four minutes, that timer will give you, what, one minute, one minute remaining? If it goes yellow, red means your time's up, sir.
Very good, thank you. Good evening, my name's Steve Vogel, I'm the President of the Shawnee County Landlords Association, and I've got a few questions and comments about the proposed landlord licensing ordinance. The proposed ordinance says the city has the power to deny, suspend, or revoke a landlord license. Would you be vote to grant a license to a landlord that is a serial violator of the property maintenance code? How about if a landlord is way behind on property taxes? If you decide not to grant a license, what will happen to the tenants living in the landlord's properties? The city recently had to relocate about 20 tenants living in the Timberly Apartments. This is no easy task. What if you had to relocate hundreds of tenants because you didn't give a landlord license? I just can't see that happening. If you grant a license to a bad landlord, then subsequently deny or revoke a license to another landlord, that sounds like a lawsuit waiting to happen. These are decisions the city will be forced to make as soon as this ordinance would go into effect. Why would you choose to put the city in this position? If the city would do a better job of enforcing the current property maintenance code, this new ordinance wouldn't be necessary. If the city can't do a better job of enforcing the current law, what makes you think it will do a good job of enforcing the new ordinance? I think a far better approach would be to enforce the property maintenance codes that you have now. The current municipal code, 8.60.070, Section 106.3, which was talked about before, says in part, upon a fourth or subsequent conviction, a fine of not less than $1,000 nor more than $2,500 will be imposed. The next bullet point says, quote, "In addition to the preceding fines, such person may be punished, punished by a term of imprisonment, which shall not exceed six months, or by both such fines and imprisonment." If this ordinance were enforced, I think it would make a difference. I'm really pleased to see some members of the Topeka Tenants Organization here tonight. I attended their meeting last week. I encourage them to attend the council meeting and speak their mind. We don't agree on landlord licensing, but that's okay. They have been having to deal with the practices of one particularly bad landlord for over eight years. I'm going to say that again, over eight years. The city has done virtually nothing to make the situation better. It's about time that stopped. Thank you.
All right. Hello, everybody. I had some notes I've been going to throw out and reply to some of the ones that Mr. Vogel just raised. I am here as part of Topeka Tenants, the group that organized the Know Your Rights meeting last week that he attended. And I do agree with him that one of the big problems that we are facing is that, of course, the lack of compliance with codes means that we have had, over the last eight years, have slowly had an out-of-town, large company purchase, at this point, I think 70, 80% of our multifamily units in this town. This really is one person that we are talking about, in some ways, in some ways. But I would also tell you that as a member of the Topeka Tenants, as a targeted case manager, as a census numerator, Lou McGinnis is not the only problem in this city. We have other slum, other slum lords, some of, most of our multifamily units, in fact, I don't think any of our multifamily units that are not HUD housing, that are like not THA, are, are owned by out-of-state licenses, or at least out-of-town in Kansas City. And that's from what we've been able to gather from Topeka Tenants by looking at available county data. We don't actually have a lot of access to who owns what. We have to look at the address that's listed on the LLC, because all of these corporations are hiding behind LLCs that they are using to hide who they are and hide the transparency. A lot of people in this city had no idea about Lou McGinnis and how much he owned, until we had the trash fiasco last Christmas, and everybody started comparing notes, and they all realized they were owned by the same guy, who had the same contract that he'd let lapse for everyone altogether. And they all started comparing the same stories. We have the same stories, which is that, that when you get bought, when your place gets bought by Lou McGinnis, and I used to be, the place that I lived at, Mount Vernon, was owned by a small place that did a good job keeping its maintenance up. Suddenly your rent goes through the roof and your maintenance quality goes down. But I'm telling you guys what you already know. What I want to address that Vogel said, and I think it is a valid thing, is the reality is, is if we do decide, because heavens knows whether he is going to comply with the codes, if we do decide we're going to revoke him a license, what do we do with the housing? At that point, do we force him then to sell to local landlords, where you could actually hold them accountable, where they live in the community and actually care about the community? Are we going to municipalize the housing? Are we going to make it cooperative ownership? We need to think about that, I do agree, as part of this ordinance. Because we are looking at if potential denial of license to Lou McGinnis, a massive displacement, because we have allowed the problem to get this bad. Now my hope is that we won't get it this bad, because right at the moment, our property maintenance stuff, it isn't enforced, we don't have a lot of teeth to it. It takes four violations, not against a single owner, but against every individual LLC, and every single one of his properties is under a separate LLC, which makes it a lot harder to get people to that fourth point that Mr. Vogel was talking about. And I know that there are some local landlords who are worried about how this will impact them and impact their profits, but I get assured by all of them that they are not here just to make a profit, they want to provide a service to the community, in terms of providing residential services. And I admire that idea, and if that is true, then first of all, you should be providing maintenance already, and this really shouldn't scare you, because you're doing your job and you're doing what you're supposed to do. But I would also say that the restaurants in town would probably be more profitable, have lower prices, if they were allowed to have rats and cockroaches, browning rat. And we don't allow them to do that, we shut them down if they do that and if they violate enough. We have not been doing that with housing. Housing is a necessity, not a luxury, and to allow, it is, the bar is set in hell. I said that your house has to be safe to live in. That is what you should be doing if you are a landlord, and if you're not doing it, you need to get out of the business.
Thank you. Alex Buzicki? Did I pronounce that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, my name is Alex Buzicki. Today I'm representing Topeka Tenants. I support all of these ordinance changes, changes. I want to thank you, I want to thank city staff for bringing these up. I want to thank city staff for everything that they do to provide safe and affordable housing. And I think these ordinances are a good step going forward. Shell LLCs do exist, and something needs to be done about them. I support raising the floor for the punishments against landlords. I've been door knocking one of the apartment complexes that's owned by one of these Shell LLCs, a major landlord, and I've been seeing a lot of human suffering, a lot of water coming out of walls, a lot of mold for months. I've seen sewage coming out of tubs. These problems can last for over a year, no action taken. I can only recommend that people go to C Click Fix, or HCCI, Kansas Legal Services, so many times, something needs to be done, and these landlords need to be held accountable. Let's see, I know that there are several landlords here, landlords watching, that are uncertain about these changes, and they have, they have real concerns. I do want to commend the landlords that can see outside of themselves, and can see the slum lords that do exist within the city. Thank you. I also want to recognize that this is just mass human suffering. The why behind this is the large impacts to quality of life, and the reality of like retaliation and displacement of tenants is real. It's something that should be considered when looking at new ordinances, but I also believe that these ordinances will help strengthen, sorry, I'm at a loss for words, will help strengthen tenants' rights, so that they can stay in livable housing that's safe. Again, thank you for the city staff's work, and thank you for striving to provide our constituents with safe housing.
I can't support this, here's why. We already have really strong penalties against us. We have in the Code up to $499 per day, and 145 days in jail for every day it exists. That's pretty strong. That's stronger than most criminals ever get. Somebody breaking your house, they're not going to face any of that. Someone's robbing, well, robbing a bank, yeah, it's federal, but it's not like, what we have right now is too many people have pushed to have our code as an HOA. They're enforcing many things that are not safety and health. For example, a neighbor of mine, they wrote him up for having peeling paint, but give us a call, we'll come out there, because a lot of stuff they don't want to commit to writing. They came up, he had vinyl siding on his house. The man worked for a vinyl company, and he was able to bring home the extras. Well, he put it on his house. It all didn't match. They made him paint the vinyl one consistent color. How's that about safety and health? That's above, that's about aesthetics. And they did that because they threatened him with those big fines and jail times. He didn't want any of that, he didn't have his Testament of Forty-two to fight it. Another person in North Topeka, the neighborhood, they had nice, well, the houses, the body of the house was a different color than the trim. Again, they wrote them up for paint on the windows. And the problem was, her windows, trim, and the body were the same color. They wanted to make it a different color, to make it more blend in. Another case we've had, they've told, stairs on a front porch were made out of treated lumber. The neighborhood had either wood stairs that were painted, or stone. They wanted those treated lumbers painted. When it was pointed out that code allows it, because it's treated lumber, it's going to stand up. You know what they told me? Counsel erred, and I'll visit with the prosecutor, see if she agrees. Well, apparently it wasn't her, but they came back agreed, and I was prosecuted. So I was going ahead and taking pictures of some of your houses. Karen has treated lumber stairs, which have not been painted, looking at Shawnee County Parks and Rec, things like this, taking pictures of that, pulled out regulations saying when you build a handicap ramp, you cannot paint that for six months, or you violate your guarantee. Two days before we go to trial, dismissed. We should have something that's strictly about safety and health, nothing about HOA, which they wanted, they're secretly trying to do. May I have a couple minutes?
You still have a minute left, sir.
Oh, good, good. Something else is going on, which you're not aware of, and we're not, again, we're not committed to. In order to get in-house and do internal inspections, we're starting to use the water department. The water department fakes a problem with the house. It's either on turn-on, the person has lost their water because of non-pay, and then when they come back out, they claim, oh, we tried to turn on, there's a problem, we've got to get inside the house. So they make another point for the next day, and then Code comes in behind them. They quickly sign a piece of paper, and, my God, how is that legal? Longmont, Colorado was fined $400,000 for doing something similar to that. Forget it. We talked about evicting people from, because they don't have utilities, and I'm torn on that. I'm, I'm torn either way. Colorado passed a law last session.
Mr. Delapp, would you like more time?
Yeah.
How much time do you think you need, sir?
Uh, give me a couple minutes.
So two minutes, anyone oppose?
I'm going to go one.
One?
Okay, thank you. Can I go?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Colorado passed an ordinance, and, just last session, and it prohibits municipalities and landlords from evicting tenants from lack of utilities. They were tired of seeing that happens. I'm torn on that, because usually that's the first sign when they lose their utilities, that they're not going to be able to pay your rent. Unfortunately, the way it works in the United States, this stuff starts going from state to state to state. So be aware of that. And if we are putting them out right now, we should offer them a place to live, like I thought we were doing that for the homeless. The guy at 21st and Adams, correct me if I'm wrong, he was paying $150 a month, the house was in horrible shape. When we put him out, where did he go? He went to the streets, and eventually died. We should offer him a place to live. Proclamation to show there's other, other things that are, that are going on. Let me pass this around.
Yeah, I think, give them to the clerk first, sir.
Greg Debacker. I've been landlord for 47 years, bought my first property about age 21. The quality of tenants has really declined in the last five, 10 years. You know, we talk about slum lords, I have had a lot of slum tenants. I have a video of an apartment complex in Topeka that no one would want to go into. The tenants hoarded, there are bedbugs in there, there are cockroaches in there. It's not my apartment building, I never owned an apartment building. Anyway, I passed out this Kansas State statute, 1216138, I'd like to bring to your attention. No city or county shall adopt, enforce, or maintain a residential property licensing ordinance or resolution. You know, if a tenant requests a person to come into their home and look at it, that's fine. If I, as a homeowner, want you to come in and look at my home in property maintenance, that's fine. But the city should not go arbitrarily and just randomly inspect homes. They, they don't have any business in this statute. I believe everybody reads it differently, maybe council will read it differently. I brought to your attention a couple of weeks ago, Sabatha has an ordinance where, it was about two or three weeks ago, maybe a month ago, they put some onus on the tenants to maintain the property. When I rent a property, I don't want a couch on the front porch. I should not be a policeman and say, hey, get that couch off the front porch. Why should I get a fine? If I rent a car and go speeding down I-70 at 90 miles per hour and get a ticket, the rental company's not going to pay my fine. That should be up to the tenant. So if there's a couch, if there's an abandoned vehicle in the yard, don't come to me as a landlord. You know, we need to clean up the tenants, we need to maybe teach tenants how to maintain properties. You know, a lot of kids come out of school, they don't, they're not taught how to maintain properties. I figured out, there are 36,000 homes in Topeka, about 12,000 are probably rentals, and I don't know if this ordinance maintain, or talks to apartment buildings, but there are a lot of different aspects to rentals. There are a lot of people who go south for the winter, they rent their home out to legislators... home out to legislators, are they going to have to have a license for three months? A lot of questions about this proposed ordinance. There are some ladies that live around Washburn, they rent the basement of their home out to a college student. Are they going to have to have a license? That's all I have. Just questions that need to be answered. Thank you.
All right. Representative Alexis Simmons?
Hi, everyone. This is my first time before the city council. You guys are kind of intimidating. I was very excited to hear about this. During my campaign, I knocked on nearly 2,000 doors and I heard countless concerns in east and southeast Topeka specifically about landlords and oversight and accountability in the community. So when I heard about the possibility of a registry, I thought, yeah, this makes a lot of sense to me. I think all of us here appreciate the value of good data, and I believe a huge asset that the city could benefit from is comprehensive data from a registry and the information that it would collect. I also think it's important to remember that government's job is to fill the gap. And I, I hear the concerns from landlords, okay? I get it, I get it. It's your property. But we're also talking about kids in our communities and families and people that we want to stay here. And there's a responsibility, if you're going to provide housing to someone in our community, you need to meet expectations. We should not lower the bar because it's inconvenient to landlords. So I stand in support completely of a registry, and I very much encourage the city council to adopt that and more so to engage the community as you do it to ensure that those concerns that I hear at the doors are the concerns that are addressed in this policy. And if there needs to be a change at the state level, well, I volunteer. I am more than happy to add that into the numerous affordable housing bills that we have in front of the legislature. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Councilwoman Valdivia Alcala?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Several things as going over these last three points. Yes, I definitely think it is good. I want to thank Kelly and others in legal for the work that they're doing on this. But yes, I think it's wonderful to have that fine even after, you know, even after it's been, it's been fixed, if that fine is already in process. I think that we need to also move faster, you know, on these issues because, again, we can use, you know, a multifamily housing unit across the street from our Lady Guadalupe School and Church to where, you know, it took them probably over four years and only when they were on the cusp of starting to be fined and only when they were being reported on by media did they fix their front steps. I mean, and that was like four years. So I, I think that that's needed as well. I think with the rental registry, I do have a question. I know that there has not been a dollar amount that has been attached to the rental registry, but has there been any kind of review on what other comparable cities our size are charging for, in their rental registries? Do we have any of that?
Off the top of my head, ma'am, I'd have to look back at the other city's ordinances. We had discussed maybe like $20 per, per license, I think in our discussions, anywhere around that ballpark. What do you think, Robert?
Yeah, councilmember, I would, I would tell you that I've seen anywhere from a range of $6 per unit up to $25 to $40 if I think, if I remember correctly. But I've seen as low as six, and for sure, I've seen 25 in the, in the Kansas area. But we could provide more research on that, ma'am.
I think the research is important. I think the one thing that we don't want to get real tied up in is having the highest rate that we can. What we need to get caught up in is that we are having the registry itself. I think that this should also continue through public health and safety since Councilwoman Hiller, you know, has done a tremendous amount with staff, with other committee members, and it's, it remains a natural fit. I do think that there's going to be things that we can learn from Wichita since they are having much, if not identical, discussions as we are. And I know about three or four weeks, there was an article in the, in the newspaper about them opting for a rental registry, but there was a lot of pushback on it. And I think that for the number of years that we have been dealing with this, we need to do a proper amount of educating and letting single-family home, uh, single-family renters know that this isn't about some huge target on their back. This is about dealing with slum lords like McGinnis that are totally out of control, that were never used to being fined, let alone being, being written up. And the only way that we're going to be able to get a hold on the crisis that we have in multifamily dwellings is by having more stringent enforcement that is followed by having the registry and by having committees stay on, you know, on top of this. And I would also encourage to continue to talk up as we develop this incentives as well, especially for our good landlords, for, for the single-family landlords, for them to understand this is not some, you know, target on their backs in that way to try to fine them a lot. And I think that education is going to be important. And I also think that we, in, in especially the districts where so much of this housing, multifamily housing is in such a mess, we really need to be working with the activists and the advocates that live in these spaces and to develop a tenant bill of rights and bring it forward to the council level. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Councilwoman Miller?
I don't know. Can you hear that? You can't hear that? I hear something now.
Your, your mic's hot. Councilwoman.
I was gonna say, let that go. Thank you, thank you. Steph, quick question. I got a couple things. First, drivers need a license to drive, correct? Okay, you must stay compliant for any violations while using that license, correct? Okay. If you don't fix or pay for those violations, your license gets suspended, correct? Okay. If your license gets suspended and then you continue to use that license that you don't have anymore, you can get arrested, correct?
Okay.
That's, those are all factual things, right? I just want to make sure that we understand that there's licenses for different things that we already comply with as a society, that if you don't do what you're supposed to do with that license and you don't comply with that license, you could possibly get suspended and have ramifications for that. I just want to make sure that that was said so that we can understand, okay? Thank you on that. And in recent months, there have been some communications sent to the council where they say that people up here hate landlords. I asked a couple different people who sent those emails who they're talking about, and they won't say who they're talking about. So I'll just assume that I can speak for everybody up here and say that that is a complete misrepresentation of any efforts from the city staff or ideas from the council of what we're trying to do here. We want to champion good landlords out here and make sure that people know who those people are. And if anything, that will make you get better tenants in your homes because people will know that you are a home that takes care of your tenants. Yeah. So I know we're going to have discussion on this later, so I just want to make sure those things are said. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, there's some, few things I was thinking of. And I've seen this in a few other areas. When you put hotel, motel, dormitory, like one, one person has hotel this big on their front door, and it's a, it's a apartment complex or a, you know, cut-up house. So there are ways they can evict at any moment because it's a hotel. So I think we need to look at the hotel, motel, dormitory language and make sure that someone's is not going to put hotel on their apartment complex or on their, on their single-family dwelling to get skirt around the licensing. Contact info. I think emergency contact info is, is a must, that we must have. The, there's been several different things I've had where I've had issues with landlords in this town that people have brought to me, and I can't get a hold of anyone at any point. The city can't get a hold of anyone at any point to get this resolved. So I think we need to have a mandatory 24-hour callback number that they give us that can start getting the ball rolling that we've contacted them about. A good example is the, the trash at White Lake's apartment complex. Three or four days, we were reaching out, reaching out, reaching out, trying to get a hold of someone about that, and we couldn't get a hold of anyone. And then all of a sudden, they magically appeared with dumpsters. So I think contact, ADA was brought up earlier. I work with ADA in my, in my other job. ADA violations happen all over with, with, with renters. We need to make sure that ADA trumps almost any other law out there. It's a federal law. ADA needs to make sure we're, we're backing ADA compliance. And Mr. Shardine, can I, can I borrow you for a second for a question? And this may not, you may not be your area, maybe legal actually more, but are, when someone goes in the house to fix another issue, are they mandated reporters to tell you guys if there is a major violation in, in the house? Like if they have to go, like, let's say our utilities has to go into a house for, for an issue. Are they mandated reporters?
No.
Okay. I just want to make sure. So, all right. All right. Thank you, sir. And I said this earlier, I want to work with the landlord association, but it feels like they're, they've come here and sat here and said that, you know, we're, we're trying to almost punish them. We're not, we're going after them almost a little bit. I haven't had a single one of them contact me about the issues that we've had in the city and that they know about. Your organization should be proactive, not reactive. If you see issues out there with landlords, come to us with ideas of how to help get these bad landlords out of here. All right. There are some majorly great landlords. I have one across the street from me. Anytime a tenant moves out, new carpet, new paint, new appliances. Does, does an amazing job and people stay there for three, four, or five years at a time. So that's one of the ones that takes care of it. And then it's been said previously and today, you know, about, oh, people tear up the house, people don't know how to rent, all this kind of stuff. That's your job as a landlord. You have, just as much as people sometimes will tear up your place, I know as a former renter, I fixed up places I've lived in to make them better by putting a new coat of paint in there to make sure I could get in there early or to make sure that I didn't have a off-white, yellowish paint on there. I wanted a nice white paint in, in there for me and my family. So sometimes renters will do it upon themselves with your permission, fix up the place, just like ones will tear it up. And to sit there and say that we need to teach someone to be a good tenant, that's part of the job of being a landlord, is going in when there's violations, talking to those tenants and saying, hey, this is unacceptable, this may violate your lease, this needs to be fixed or you will, we'll start the process to get rid of you. That's part of doing business. You make money from doing it. There are, there are issues with any business trying to, when they go to make money. So to sit there and kind of put it back on the tenants, to me, is very, very disheartening. And finally, I'd like to say a thank you to Representative Simmons. I emailed her earlier today. I really like that someone at the state level is taking the, taking proactive acknowledgement of a local issue. So anyone else, anyone online? Oh, sorry, Councilwoman Hiller?
That's okay.
And then Dr. Perez?
Okay. Well, I just wanted to thank everybody that, that submitted comments beforehand and in here as well. This is really a tricky issue. I, I have chaired public health and safety for the last couple of years, and it is one, as Councilwoman Valdivia Alcala suggested, that if this issue's going to be considered, probably where it should go. Understand, I guess Wichita just tabled it. They voted down part of it and tabled everything else, as I understand it. One of the things that we face is that cities have it on paper and get everybody signed up, but that's really all that's going through. Something that we, hopefully, everybody who turned in comments or who spoke would, would be willing to come to, to work on this if, if it advances. There is, we've done a lot here in Topeka that hasn't been discussed at all today in terms of working to protect against retaliation, do education, those sorts of things. We've also got some great technical capabilities to kind of run numbers or get addresses and contact information on just about anybody. A lot of things have improved over the recent years. And so all those things and, and, you know, backing up into exactly what are we wanting a rental registration system to do that we don't already have, just to make sure for the, the costs, as, as, again, Councilwoman suggested, all those things to sort out whether we just need to do, as some of the landlords said, enforce better, or whether we really need extra tools. So appreciate bringing it up. We're, we're on deck, I think, next week for some, already we're on deck before this all came up to do a report on some of the things that have been worked, worked on and have emerged out of the changing our culture property maintenance initiatives. So that might give people some other thoughts and perspectives as well. Thank you.
Dr. Perez?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I just wanted to state again for the record that we are aware of the state law, that we cannot require interior inspections, specifically, I guess, to what the gentleman brought up, where it says, no city or county shall adopt, enforce, or maintain a residential property licensing ordinance or resolution, which includes a requirement for periodic interior inspections of privately-owned residential property for city or county code violations unless the law framework is consented to such interior inspections. So just, again, just wanted to state for the record that we're well aware of this law, and by no means are we suggesting that we deviate from it with what we're talking about this evening. Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification, Dr. Perez. Councilwoman Valdivia Alcala?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I wanted to say one more thing. So this is why I believe, and I think that tenants, multifamily tenants would agree with this, right, is that, let's take Timberley as an example. This is why it's so important to have a registry. Timberley is an example. Timberley was supposed to have been, had oversight from HUD, and that's the HUD in Kansas City. It was supposed to have had oversight from the Kansas Housing Resource Corporation, which was none, even after the difficult meetings we had with them. I mean, it was all lip service, but we know about lip service in government. So what we're trying to develop here is, is something that, over time, it's not going to happen right away, but over time could change the narrative. Because I, I, I agree with, you know, what some of the public speakers were saying, the public comment about, if we really look at how bad the state is, especially in the highest, you know, the level of slum lords, that there could very well already be Timberley's there to an extent. And there probably is. The only thing that brought up, that it was put on the record, is like, city manager was saying, it wasn't because people, you know, code was trying to force its way in. It's because door knocking occurred and folks trusted the people that were door knocking and let them in, and then that blew the whole thing wide open. And it, it was horrendous. It was horrendous for those families. So I think that we really have to keep that in mind when we think about the registry and whatever pushback we're getting from those that do not want it or believe that it's too much of a stretch for government. It's not. It's definitely not. So thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Anyone else online or in person? Thank you, and thank you for all our speakers we've had today, all the, the public comments. All right. We have no one signed up for general public comments, so we'll move on to announcements. City Clerk?
Just a quick overview of the November 18th agenda. On the agenda, starting off, we have six board appointments. Consent agenda, we will just have the minutes of the regular meeting from November 12th. And then on action items, we will have the ordinance for the Quick Trip PUD 25-12. The ordinance for North Topeka Townhouse is PUD Amendment Number Four by Topeka Habitat Humanity, PUD 25-11. Final, a final plat for Misty Harbor Estates Subdivision Number Six, and ordinance for the annexation for Misty An ordinance for the annexation for Misty Harbor's Estates, Number Six. And then we will have a public hearing date setting for December 9, 2025, for the 2025 budget amendments. And then for non-action items, we will just have the discussion for the 2026 legislative agenda. And that's all that I have tonight. Thank you.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I just wanted to, just want to announce some of the things that we've shared with the governing body the last few days, and also WIPW, the red couch the other day. City is increasing to, I guess, in response to some of the challenges that some of our communities incurred based upon the federal government shutdown. We're looking to actually increase our water assistance program by $100. Essentially, folks who are eligible for that assistance have been capped out at $300 a year. We're increasing that to $400 a year, and we're achieving that within our existing program budget. So, and then in addition to that, this Friday and Saturday, members of our fire department will be out collecting or passing the helmet, again, similar to what they've done for MDA, with all those proceeds going to United Way of Col Valley, to be dispersed within the Topeka community for folks who are experiencing included securities. And so I just want to thank Chief Longstaff, the Fire Union, and the Fire Department for that support, as well as for Sylvia Davis, our utilities director, for looking at ways of how the city of Topeka can help someone most vulnerable during these times. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Councilwoman Hiller?
Just one round of kudos. I wanted to give kudos to Braxton Copley and our zoning-sign inspector, Megan Rodacap. We had a conversation a couple weeks ago about how the campaign signs seem to then encourage everybody else in town to put up all these various signs in the right-of-way where our ordinance does not allow them to be. But obviously, when you see all the campaign signs, you think maybe it's okay. And so they did a run before, right before the election, to make the rounds of the various private signs that were all in the parking. And as you may have noticed, the town's looking pretty cleaned up here now, a week after the election. So I thought it was a really great initiative, and I think it looks much better on the quarter. A lot of people just didn't realize, I think, that they weren't, that it wasn't okay to have those signs, and so it was a good way to move it out. That's it, thank you.
Councilwoman Valdivia-Acla?
I have nothing.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. First, I want to thank all the veterans for their service. My dad was a vet, so I understand, and I do appreciate your service.
Thank you.
Not only that, I do want to, on another note, a pillar in Quinton Heights Steel, Howard Blackman has passed away, and his funeral is this Saturday at the Latter Day Saints. And Howard was very instrumental in many, many boards, many boards, including the Topeka Police Department. He was very instrumental there. He was also a founder of the Quinton Heights Steel NIA, and so, and he was a coach for many, many years for high school and junior high. Howard did a lot, but I did want to recognize that and keep his family and his wife, Sandra, in prayer. I also want to take this opportunity to thank District Three for electing me again. I remember when they came to me, they said they wanted me to run again, and I said, well, you'll have to vote again, and they did. And I wanted to thank them for that. It's an honor sitting in this chair, and it's a privilege representing them, and I am very happy that they didn't listen to the people that can't vote for me, that didn't want me here. They listened to themselves, and so I will continue to walk alongside the NIAs that strengthens our communities, that are the backbone of this community and the city. And again, it's an honor and it's a privilege, and I'm almost speechless. I can't sit up here forever, and I'm not gonna sit up here forever, but it's just not my time yet to step down. So to the staff that has reached out to me, I want to say thank you for your well wishes. This, it's a tough job. It's a tough job for all of us, not just me, but for all of us, and I tell people that all the time. We have families, we do have some type of life, I don't know where it's at, but we do have that. And I just want to say that Topeka is my home, it will always be my home. I love this city, and again, I just want to say thank you. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Now, for the record, Councilwoman, are you right now the longest-serving ever, or in this next term will be the longest-serving ever? Right now? Okay. Well, thank you for all the service you've done with the city of Topeka over the years. Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I know it was a hard election for you this year. Well, I wanted to first say, this has been a really tough week for us as city employees, and especially for this council. I also, on a higher note, wanted to send a shout-out to all of the people that are, all of these coaches that are working with our young people. It's not always easy, and I say that because I know how boisterous I get at my grandkids' game. Sometimes I have to remind myself that, hey, you are an adult. But guys like our councilman, Miller, who works with young people in more than one sport, that's, to me, I couldn't do it, and I'm probably one of the greatest athletes ever graced this city. I'm not brave. But when I see he, Tony Barksdale, lots of other young men that are working and shaping our young people, it makes me excited.
And women.
And women, and women. It's so good to see it. And I know Councilman Miller, my grandkid, my youngest grandson loves him, and I always say, maybe thinks, because they're near the same size. But it's just, it feels good to be, to know that I know them, and they have the strength to do it, and I don't, but that's it, Deputy Mayor. Thank you so much.
I don't know how much of that we have to strike from the record.
None of it.
Councilwoman Miller, the rebuttal?
What Michelle Obama say? I don't care whatever she said, I ain't... A little bit ago, I congratulated Councilwoman Ortiz as well, and I shared something I live by every single day. She said, she told me, oh, don't think like that, but I have no, I have no other way. I don't know any other way. Because God ain't petty, but I am. So, I want you to know, sir, that won't be the last time that gets addressed. But I will say, congratulations on that thought, Councilmember Banks. Washburn Rule, 6A state champions in soccer for the first time since 2012, I think they said. Silver Lake volleyball, got the state championship as well. And we have Hayden as the top seed in 4A, or 4A to 1A, going still in their football right now, so big ups to them and good luck going forward. We are about to embark on a basketball season here, so I encourage our residents to go out to your local schools. Some of you just voted on a bond out of shiny heights. Go out and support your schools. If you have time, come by. We'll be coaching at Topeka High this year. I'm very excited. We've got a tryout starting next week. Coach Robbie Sanders, head coach, Corey Powell, Darius, we're over there trying to help these young fellows, and we have an entire town of people who should be able to come out and support the Trojans basketball. The Lakers are gonna be good as well. I'm not gonna say we'll be good, but we will certainly be competitive, and we'll hopefully be better than what they were last year. Besides that, I just want to say that I agree with what you said earlier, Ms. Hiller. There's a whole lot of, call it congestion, that we have up here, and I think we'll be able to smooth that out soon enough. But as adults, we need to be able to have hard conversations, and not take it personal, and understand that we are up here representing a lot of different people at all at the same time. So I thank you, and staff, thank you very much for putting everything together. I hope we can have a good week going into this next one. Do we have any executive session? Okay, I'll just stop there then. All right, thank you.
Councilman Dobler?
I have nothing, Deputy Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Duncan?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilwoman Hofer?
Nothing tonight.
First off, since the councilwoman wasn't here last week, I want to say thank you for serving the city. Even well before I even decided to run, you and I used to have very, very adamant debates some days. And she was very educational, and opened my eyes to a lot of things, and there'd be times we'd get going, and it almost, we had to stop, walk away, and five minutes later we were okay with each other, but we always had some great conversations when we used to work together. Thank you to all the organizations and businesses for the Veterans' Day recognition yesterday. Myself and Mayor Padilla are both veterans. We have several veterans in the city staff, and lots throughout the city. It's amazing every time you get on social media around Veterans' Day, and you see how many people change their photos over to their military photo, and you either forgot they're a veteran, or you didn't even know they're a veteran, and it's great to grow that network of people that veterans have with each other. And finally, I'd like to say, it was an honor to run tonight's meeting. As deputy mayor, there's no guarantee that you're gonna do anything. You're kind of at the call of the mayor to step in when needed, and I've stepped into a few events for Mayor Padilla, ran one JDO meeting, but to me, tonight was an honor to do this, and haven't screwed it up yet, so, but I have a great group of people that work around me, so I always have the confidence just because I have the people around me here, so thank you very much. We are, let me get the script. We have the need for three executive sessions. Mr. Andrew Sutcliffe, Attorney?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. The first executive session, the motion for this first executive session is as follows. The motion would be to recess into executive session not to exceed 20 minutes to give legal advice and discuss cases currently in litigation and other matters deemed privileged under the attorney-client privilege as allowed under KSA 75-4319B2. The open meeting will resume in this room in the governing body chambers. The following staff will be necessary to assist the governing body in its deliberations. The interim city attorney and other staff members is needed.
Do I have a motion to go into the executive session? Moved by Councilwoman Miller, second. Councilwoman Ortiz. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. We will recess for 10 minutes and then go into the executive session. We have reconvened the meeting and are now back in open session with no action being taken by the governing body during the executive session. There is a need for another executive session. The interim city attorney will state the motion, please.
Yes, the motion would be to recess into executive session for a time not to exceed 20 minutes to discuss personnel matters involving individual employees as allowed under KSA 75-4319B1. The open meeting will resume in this room in the city council chambers. The following individuals will be necessary to aid the governing body in its discussion. The city manager, the human resources director, and any other staff members is needed.
All right, do I have a motion to go into the executive session? Motion by Councilwoman Banks. Do I have a second? Second by Councilwoman Miller. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we will, we will recess immediately into the executive session. All right, we have reconvened the meeting and are now back in open session with no action being taken by the governing body during the executive session. There is a need for a third executive session. The interim city attorney will state that motion.
The motion would be to recess into executive session for a time not to exceed 30 minutes to discuss personnel matters involving individual employees as allowed under KSA 75-4319B1. The open meeting will resume in this room in the city council chambers. The following individuals will be necessary to aid the discussion. The members of the governing body.
Do I have a motion to go into the third executive session?
Motion.
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Banks, a second?
Second.
And a second by... All right. We will recess and go immediately into the final executive session. We have concluded our executive session. No action has been taken. If there's no other business coming before this body, this meeting is adjourned.